It's six o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission to order. Would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Painter, will you please call the roll?
Member Fran?
Yes.
Chair Keeney?
Here.
Vice Chair List?
Here.
Member Lupper?
Here.
Member Rains?
Here. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar, which is comprised of our meeting minutes and some additional public comment. It's been brought to my attention that we have one change to make to the minutes from July 16th. Mr. Painter, you want to quickly explain the change we need to make?
Yes, it's on page two of the draft minutes and staff has highlighted the section, subsection, that needs to be corrected. What went through the process of the staff report and the minutes to the draft that came to you is actually incorrect. It's subsection B instead of A of section 15061 of the CEQA guidelines. So it was staff's intent that what is proposed tonight is what staff's intent was at the time the staff report was prepared for the sourdough and company project. And we want to make sure that the accurate CEQA exemption is stated.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. So we have one modification to our minutes. Any other changes from or comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the amended minutes and receive and file public comments to the planning commission?
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second?
All seconds.
All seconds since I was here.
Okay. All in favor?
Point of order before we, point of order. Every item on the agenda, the public has the opportunity to comment on. So before you, before you raise and pass a motion to approve the consent calendar, you do want to open it up to the public if they wish to comment on item, items 4.1 or 4.2.
Interesting.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, and to staff then, I don't think that's reflected in our bylaws in terms of procedure. I could be wrong, but I don't think it is. And it might be something next year when the bylaws come back, I'll ask you to put that in your tickler file. But in all my years on the commission, and I'm not speaking against what he's suggesting, I don't, I don't recall that. So our procedure might need to be.
Yeah, it wasn't long ago that our city attorney did provide a legal opinion on that. I think it was a question raised by-
It is true. It's absolutely true. Yeah, but it doesn't reflect on our procedure.
Thank you. Would any member of the public like to comment on items on the consent calendar this evening? Okay.
I would.
Go right ahead.
I wish that the public, because I believe there's a great many people who love Placerville, as we all do, that we would get information items at least a day ahead of time so that we can, I regret that this packet of correspondence was not, we didn't have access to it prior to that meeting because it was very informative. So I don't know how we can get the word out to the public, at least give us 24 hours so that the commissioners have, can read it and absorb it. That's all.
My recollection, Commissioner, is at least from the materials submitted by Sue Taylor, which were fairly lengthy, came that afternoon at like 4:30 in the afternoon. So really, staff didn't have the opportunity to get it to us.
And I think in, when you post the meeting notice, isn't there a deadline stated so that staff does have time to prepare the package and circulate it, not just to us, but for the rest of the public to review ahead of the meeting?
Yeah, by me-
It's one thing, yeah, if you get it to somebody by, say, four o'clock and the meeting's at six, there's no time to read it, to digest, to think about it, you know, and resort. Maybe I'm just a slow reader, but I'd like to have 24 hours.
No, I agree with you. I would like to have it all included in the package that goes to the planning commission.
No, if staff could comment on that. Whenever we put a notice out, a public notice of availability of a project so that the public can comment, review the file, review the information regarding any particular product, project, we do provide a deadline of the comment period so that any comments received prior to that deadline, we will include it in our packet that goes to you. So it'll be part of the staff report. If we receive comments after, we just do our best to get those comments to you because that's, you know, the public wishes for you to see the comment. And even comments that are received that are unrelated or well after the fact, if a member of the public wishes to have their comments directed to the commission and/or the council, we deliver that to you. So again, any, any comments received in a timely fashion will be part of your packet. Comments received after, we get them to you as quickly as we can. But we can't control when, when a member of the public decides to submit their comments.
When the city gets correspondence from anyone in relation to any topic, does, does somebody write a letter back and respond to it? Do we respond to any of this correspondence?
Probably not one of them. In the case of sourdough, we did receive some comments that were late after the planning commission took its action, but then we forward those comments to the city council for their consideration.
Thank you.
But staff does not respond to those, but we do make them available to all the decision makers.
Okay, so we get information, but we're not obligated to respond to it unless it's during a meeting or something?
Well, we are not because the action was already taken.
All right, thank you.
So the intent tonight to include those, that item on the agenda tonight was just to publicly disclose that we did receive the comments and that they were made available to you as a public courtesy, that they were addressed to you, and so that's, they are part of the public record as Director Evas just mentioned.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate all your hard work on our behalf. I know you sometimes have to scramble and put things together at the last minute. Are there any other comments from the commissioners? Mr. Smith, we've already, I've already offered to have the public comment on this, so I'm, we're going to go ahead and take action on the, Mr. Smith, I had already asked if the public wanted to speak to this and you did not respond, so we're going to move on with our voice vote.
His microphone's not on.
I am wondering whether to even consider this request since, did I not do this in proper order or?
I think it's possible that a member of the public, I think it's possible a member of the public may not have understood that you were referring to both items and that maybe you were referring to them in sequence. That is, I think that's possible.
All right. Okay, thank you for your opinion. Mr. Smith, go ahead. Do you like to speak to something on the consent calendar?
Regarding 4.2, my view is-
Could you please speak into the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Regarding 4.2, my position is that it's unnecessary, improper to have had it on the calendar. The reason is that you lost jurisdiction as soon as an appeal was filed. This is what a appellate court would call post hoc rationalizations. It means self-serving things that come in after the fact. Everyone already knew was, was in or is not in the record. When I was before you, I had Sue Taylor's letter on my, my phone. It was on my phone and ready to say, and it's just a simple thing. You press the button and it goes off. I didn't get the chance to present it. In 40 years, I don't remember any time a judge ever denied me or any lawyer the chance to do that. And it's not because it's a matter of courtesy. The judges do that because they don't want to make mistakes, and you did. And that's an example. So we already know what was in the record. And regarding Sue Taylor's statement, it doesn't matter if you never got it. The fact is that the record you did have in the second batch, the staff says, was delivered to you at the same time. And one of the commissioners described how she came early to read it. So everything we knew about the record is already there. So if she didn't present it to her, I sought to raise those points. And even if I didn't do that, those same points in a much rifer fashion were provided by somebody else that's already in the record. But as a matter of law, you lost jurisdiction as soon as an appeal is filed, and that's important to know. I don't know how many years I've come before this body and talked about due process, and you'll at most refer to staff who give you an answer to this in conflict and you let it go. I spent half the day today with the chief of thoracic surgery at a noted hospital down in Sacramento to determine whether I should have bypass surgery that involves the modern, less invasive robotic assisted, or is it going to be tearing your chest apart? Wouldn't it be stupid of me to ask a lawyer those questions? Would I ask staff the questions? No. But when it comes to due process, you ask the questions and says it's all right to give ex parte communication when the article presented to you by staff some months ago made it clear that that's not proper. The article was given to you, not by me, by the staff. It says that, that ex parte communication is not permitted in quasi judicial proceedings. It also said that it's, many administrative agencies, and frankly, all those I've ever appeared before, have cross-examination and the witnesses at the very least are sworn in. So when you asked an applicant, when someone asked an applicant, is this a franchise? And they say, no, that question answer is meaningless because you never defined, now it's not under oath, but you never defined what the question meant, what kind of-
Could you please summarize your comments? Your three minutes are up.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public would like to speak to items on the consent calendar, particularly 4.2? Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I, I just have to say, I tried to follow what I just heard. All, it's from my understanding, all of these written comments that were provided in our packet and are a matter of public record for the public were comments that were received on an item, they're dated July 16th. That was the date we heard the item, correct?
Correct.
I don't see how, and these were offered without prejudice that I can determine. I can't see how the public good is not served by making all the information available. So I really tried to follow the argument, but I did get lost in, in what was presented. I don't see any challenge with presenting the written comments. It's no different than if any one of these people had come to the meeting and handed out their written comments at that time. It's part of the record. So I think this is just making a more complete record, and I'd like to understand the other side, but it got lost on me. For staff, I would at some point like some clarification, not tonight necessarily, on the whole matter of ex parte, because I have a different understanding of that. And just so that I'm clear, and I'm sure my fellow commissioners, so that we're clear that we're doing things correctly, we'll take, if staff could provide some direction for us, that would be helpful to me personally.
Well, as, materials that we've been provided, the planning commissioners handbook and materials that are available online for other quasi judicial bodies, the thing regarding ex parte communications is to disclose them in public. So they, in fact, they are almost a necessary part of the deliberation for more complex matters, I would think, a site visit and getting questions answered, but the point is to-
That reflects my understanding. That's what I understand.
The point is to reveal, is to disclose that in public so that the public knows that you, you did have that conversation, what the, you know, who was present, if you did do the site visit, that kind of thing. But points well taken, staff, if there is, if you can provide us or send us links to other websites that could help us improve our understanding of ex parte communications, that would be helpful.
Staff will get clarification for you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on the consent calendar? Okay. I believe we can do this on voice vote. All in favor of, the motion is to adopt the amended meeting minutes from July 16th and receive and file a public comment to the planning commission regarding project CUP 19-01. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Thank you very much.
That was the most exciting consent calendar we've had in a very long time.
Here, I thought we were just going to ease, just never know what to expect. Item six, items of interest to the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. I would ask anyone in the public who would like to speak at this time to step up to the podium, and I, we'd like to observe the three-minute time limit on that. Would anyone like to speak to the planning commission on matters not on the agenda? Seeing no one, let's move on to item seven, communications. In our packet was an email from Karen Pike dated June 5th, 2019. Is it, do we need to take an action on this or just note that it was received?
Just receive and file.
Okay.
The writer requested that this letter be delivered to the planning commission and the city council, and staff has done that.
Okay, thank you.
Once again, as any item on the agenda, a member of the public can speak to it if they wish.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to that letter from Karen Pike?
Good evening.
Fran Ducham, Pollock Mines.
I read this letter, and recently I've been down here a lot. I don't normally do Placerville. I normally do the Board of Supervisors. It seems like there's an attack on the history of the small area. I am a double art major. I come from a very famous art family, and I take art to heart. That's all four disciplines that I've been trained in. And so this letter to me doesn't make sense. So I hope that when it's moving around the different governmental bodies that you take into account that we are not the South here, that the noose, the symbol, is of the Wild West, and you make an incredible amount of money on tourism depicting the Wild West, the wagon train. I worked on the wagon train to build it up. I worked on, you know, many of your events down here, and I do it for free because I believe in this small area. So again, when you read her letter, reread it again, because it's now all over the net and I think it's wrong. So I just wanted to point that out because again, we are not about being racist at all. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Kirk Smith, just to concur in what's just been said. I grew up here. My family on all sides were here in the 1880s, including, 1800s, including great grandfather who was here in 1848. And this is, we always hear this kind of thing from newcomers who are new arrivals. So keep that in mind. I've always been opposed to the death penalty. But face it, that was the law and the method of execution in the 1800s. In fact, I think the last time there was one in this country was 1996. So it was the accepted method of, of, of execution. So there was about 15 in the, in the, in this city, in the county. Only one was down at the Hangman Street, and it was with a trial. So it might be a very short trial and not be the kind of due process we might think of today, but it was a trial. So we sometimes hear words that encompass lots of things and they're summarized into just one word. Like when we say Watergate, are we talking about an apartment building? No. Are we talking about a third-class burglary? No. It means much more. So we talk about hanging, hangtown, that was because people were proud that this was law and order. This is where justice was. Because at local mining camps, it was purely outrageous. So this is something where they took pride. This was civilization. Sacramento Hill was called Hangtown Hill in the 1850s. It was the way you got into and out of town. Hangtown Creek was right, there was a mining camp of Hangtown, right where the New City Hall is. So if this person wants to picket, and I haven't seen the letter, but I heard about it, and if they want to picket, great, let's get their address and we'll bring down TV crews to describe this phenomenon about how ignorant people, and that gives us a chance to tell the wonderful story about why we're so proud of this town and why we still use that word. It's not connected with the South where people took law into their own hands and there wasn't even law. So isn't it great we get a chance to correct the public and tell them about the virtues of this town that favored civilization? So if it gives us a chance to do that, wonderful. Thank you.
We're going to leave it open to the public just a second.
Good evening. Would you, if you would, don't mind stating your name for the record? My name's Mandy, Mandy Winneke Rodriguez. And yeah, this, this letter is quite offensive, and when I read item six on your agenda, it says, "Personal attacks on individuals or comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy will not be tolerated." Well, I take quite offense to her letter, and it is slanderous. She basically is calling the town racist. So I'd like to know why she would move to a racist town. Also, I'm from Arizona. We have Tombstone in Arizona where there were also hangings, okay? So it's not a matter of race, and to me, it just comes across as a big virtual signal. I don't think she knows what she's talking about, and I think she's just stirring up problems that don't need to be. I mean, you don't like it, drive on. This is America. We still have freedom of speech. People are allowed to name their businesses what they like and have signs to say what they like. So I, I just take quite offense to it. I think everybody in town should take offense to it. To call the owners, who I don't know the owners, but to call them racist because they put the sign up, we are in Hangtown. So it's, it's quite offensive.
Any other members of the public? Okay, I'll bring her back to the commission. Go ahead.
Well, as a psychology professor and as a sociology professor, and I've taught race and prejudice in the United States, and those of us who live here realize that the Hangtown is a moniker that, we only had three hangings. It's a historical event. It's part of our culture. It's part of our marketing. It's part of our history. And the lady's offensive, you know, it took me a while to find that sign, and once I found the sign, it took me a while to realize there was a noose on there. So I really doubt that the public and the tourists that were going to be bombarded with the offensive. I think it was nothing more than Professor Hibernaly, which I have done in my life. I think she just wanted to express her opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Any other commissioners want to speak to that letter?
I'm not going after that one.
So we're not, we do not need to take action on item seven. We'll move on to item eight, environmental assessments and public hearings. Tonight, we have before us item 8.1, the project at 3092 Hazard Street. Variance is requested by the owner and project proponent. We'll have a brief summary of the staff report and the staff presentation by Mr. Painter, and then we'll allow the project proponent to step up and then bring it back to the commission for deliberation. Mr. Painter, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Their request applicant for this item was filed by Ronald Williams on behalf of the property owner, Sammy Ball. The vicinity surrounding the 3092 Hazard Street location is mostly residential neighborhood, other single-family, some multifamily, and even a small mobile home park. All of these are located within what's called the R1 6,000 zone. The parcel is legal. It has approximately 4,800 square feet of parcel area. Now, this area is non-conforming to the R1 6,000 zone, but it is legal. The 6,000, if you, just for edification, the R1 6,000, the 6,000 in this context refers to the minimum parcel size in square feet. This parcel was created long before the city had an R1 6,000 zone. The home was built back in 1955. It is not known at the time what the zoning or development requirements were in place at the time of construction. However, the, the home is located 18 feet from the rear property boundary, or what we call the rear yard. The property owner has submitted a construction application to our building department to expand the floor area of a second-story bedroom by 168 square feet. This expansion would be constructed within the 20-foot minimum rear yard setback in the R1 6,000 zone. A variance application was filed by the property owner to request a six-foot rear yard setback from the planning commission, where a 20-foot minimum rear yard is required under the R1 6,000 zone. This request is necessary for the proposed construction because it would encroach further into that rear yard setback. As I mentioned, the home is, is two feet into that 20-foot rear yard setback today. The applicant's submitted materials were provided as attachment A of staff's report. These materials contain a thorough description of the request, an exhibit of the proposed construction and the property, along with photos of the existing conditions of neighborhood buildings, also with non-conforming setbacks in the project vicinity. In order to approve a variance under city code, the planning commission must make findings. They must find that the granting of the request would not constitute a special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity, the granting would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and that the granting of the variance would not injure property or improvements in the vicinity of the site. The site has circumstances surrounding, and the neighborhood around it that apply to the project property as well as neighboring parcels in the vicinity, including a parcel at 3101 Turner Street. It too has a similar non-conforming parcel area. It also, the home size is approximately the same as the subject parcel. Both of them are non-conforming, as I mentioned, to the minimum 6,000 square foot zone. And as I mentioned earlier, the project site parcel area is 4,008, approximately 4,800 square feet. The Turner Street parcel has a non-conforming parcel area of just slightly larger at 5,000 square feet. The existing Hazard Street project site home, again, with, is just under 1,000 square feet, and the addition of 168 would increase that floor area to 1,164. This, this floor area is comparable to that property that I mentioned earlier on Turner Street, and that existing home has 1,120 square feet of building floor area. A second circumstance is the built-out neighborhood nature. The applicant has provided you photos which show the existence of numerous residences and accessory structures in the immediate project vicinity that have non-conforming setbacks and also are in the same R1 6,000 zone. The project site shares this circumstance, and there are numerous examples of setback inconsistencies or non-conformities, as we call it in, in planning parlance. These circumstances regarding the site and neighboring properties show that there, that this request would not grant a special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity and under the same zoning classification. The proposed construction would be entirely within the project parcel. Windows proposed in the addition would look out to the north and south yards, not to the west, towards the rear yard. The, the request therefore would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, or welfare, or injure, nor injure property or improvements in the vicinity of the site. This item tonight was noticed, and written notices were provided in accordance to our standard practice, as well as a publication in the Mountain Democrat. Staff has received no, no comments regarding this request this evening. The request was also evaluated for environmental impacts, and staff found that the request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to section 15303A of the Californian Quality, California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, in that it involves a minor alteration, setback variance, in land use limitations not resulting in the creation of a new parcel. Staff supports the request and suggests the planning commission take the recommended actions beginning on page four to adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make findings A, B, and C on page four, and conditionally approve variance 19-02, subject to conditions one through five, provided on pages four and five. Ms. Ball and Mr. Williams are in the audience this evening, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Another excellent job. Thank you very much for laying out all the issues at hand. I have a couple of questions for you, for staff. Let me see. The first one, you, actually, you answered the first one. We don't know what the 1954 zoning requirements were, so before, and then we, R1 6,000 was created later on. One question I- One question I was going to ask is, in your experience, are there a large number of parcels in our, R16, R16 designation? Are there a large number of parcels that are, have the same kind of constraint? You compared it to a parcel on Turner Street that's also in the same zoning. Is there a large percentage across Placerville?
I wouldn't, I'd hesitate to give you a percentage, but they do come up from time to time. There is some neighborhoods that tend to have overall smaller lot sizes than, than others. One neighborhood in particular would be the Coloma Street section between Highway 50, where the off-ramp's located, up to Spring. Most of those lots are very small. It is also an R1-6 zone, and I would think there are very few that even exceed 6,000 square feet. So in answer your question, yes, there are, there are several.
The reason I was asking, you know, looking at this constrained lot, 20-foot setback rear setback seems excessive, and I, perhaps we could discuss exploring, creating a different kind of zone to better accommodate these homeowners. But that, that answers that question. The other, the final question I've got right now is regarding the windows. I want to state right now that I have added to the packet that you received pictures that I took this afternoon with permission of the project proponents. They let me come to the backyard. So you've each been given a, a copy of photos from my phone, and this is the backyard, the site. One thing that I'm concerned about is ensuring the privacy of the occupants beyond the fence. I think that's best seen on page two. That's kind of a picture of the, the house its closest. So you stated in the staff report and also in the application, it says that the windows would only be on the north and south, not on the west.
Perhaps best to illustrate would be to look at the graphic behind you. It's the one on the right, where the applicant has provided us, this is part of their plan check submitted for their construction permit, but it clearly shows the new addition, which, which has that open space underneath it, and the elevation on the lower right would be the perspective of the rear yard, the neighboring property at the rear.
Actually, from this, that diagram, it would improve their privacy. Currently, there is a, a window that faces west.
That's a good, good point.
Bonus.
So the windows, if you look at the elevation on the left, in the first, lower left, there's a window facing, in that context, it would be facing south, and then there's a smaller window facing north.
Okay. Good. So, since we were discussing ex parte communications, I'll go ahead and do that right now. I did visit the site and met with the project proponents, and just to kind of discuss the project. And I'd like to add for the commissioners, other commissioners benefit. Right now, the plan underneath the addition for the, the bedroom would just be open, and I'll allow the applicant to explain that a little more fully. But that was, answered another question I had about the project. They intend to make that maybe part of their patio, but it's not going to be enclosed space, it'll be an open airspace. Do any other commissioners have questions of staff right now? Commissioner Reins.
Not necessarily questions, but comment. I too drove over and viewed the property, all the properties on Hazard. And my house was built in 46, so I'm quite aware of older houses and their restrictions, and that rules and regulations were not in existence at the time they were constructed. I had a little trouble finding the property on Turner, because it's just a little up, up a driveway, so I had to back up to catch it. But that's the way houses were built back then. I also realized they own that property on the south side, so there wouldn't be any, I don't think, conflict. Conflict, because it's the same thing, you know? So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I did tour the entire Hazard and Turner property, and I, I don't see any problems at all. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can make one, one comment. And this is based on some of the earlier comments that were made. Basically, when, when, when the city is looking at a variance request, we're looking at special circumstances related to the, to the size of the parcel, the shape of the parcel in relation to the zone. So when you're considering, actually considering the application, you're looking at like situations within the same zone and within the vicinity of the property in question. So in other words, you really shouldn't use an example from Coloma Street. That wouldn't be applicable to this site. So you're looking at an older neighborhood here, in this, in this particular neighborhood, not somewhere else in the city, because a lot, because this is an older subdivision, and the lots are substandard, but this is the zoning that was most closely related to the development in the site when the city had applied the zoning. Hence, the reason why we have a variance application, that's a, a safety valve, if you will, to allow an owner the ability to use their property appropriately within the context of how properties are used within that vicinity. So it's not, so it allows a, a property owner then to further develop, expand the use or structures within a property, maybe outside of the development standards. Here we have a substandard lot. But then you're looking at, does it affect negatively on, on the neighbors? If it doesn't, you can approve it.
Commissioner List.
Question for the staff. On this parcel, there is a, looks like a structure about 20 by 24 that's on the southwest corner of the property. It's not shown on the, on the plan. In terms of that and the existing house, how do we stand in terms of the, the total area of the house versus the total area of the property? Is there any conflict there? Are you?
Are you talking about coverage?
Coverage, yeah.
I, I did that calculation. It wasn't in our staff report, but I was wondering the same thing too. And what I came up with is that even with the addition, the proposed coverage would be about 24 percent, and 35 percent is allowed in the R16. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
And to further clarify, really, your role tonight is, and I know that the elevations of the proposed improvements are, are on the wall, but those really aren't for your, for your approval. It's just the variance request that's been for you tonight. You can certainly comment on what you feel about that, that aspect of what they want to do, but, but you have no authority to approve the elevations of what's proposed tonight, just the request.
I'm not looking to approve the elevations. I'm looking at total density of buildings in the area. It is what I'm looking at. I, I do have questions on, on the elevations because of the, of the brace walls or the sheer walls that they have placed on the first floor underneath the addition, but that doesn't play into it. I was just concerned with the total coverage on the property.
Anyone else have questions of staff at this time? All right. I'd like to ask the project proponents to step up to the podium and give us your perspective.
Yeah, my name's Ron Williams, and actually, my wife and I reside in the residence at 3092 Hazard Street, which is owned by my mother-in-law, Sammy Ball. And she's owned the home since 1966. And so the house has been well-kept up, and we try to, you know, keep it where we're, want to improve the neighborhood, and we always try to maintain our home, which she owns the house right next to it. So as soon as I can try to get this one in a satisfactory position where it looks really nice, I want to start working on her house as well. So to try to at least keep that corner of the neighborhood as nice as possible. And I really appreciate you guys looking at this variance and, and taking into consideration what we want to do on trying to improve the property. I don't see, on the window situation, I was a little concerned when we were drawing the plans up as well. That's the reason, right now, it does have a window that looks over that property, and I eliminated that totally. And so we took that window and put it over on the other side, which is adjacent to my mother-in-law's property, so we can view it. So at least we have some light going in there. And I think I want to put a skylight in. So I think it should be considered to the neighbors as well, which we're friends with everybody around there anyway. That was the reason for that as well. So if anybody has any questions, I mean, I took around, I'm not a photographer, but I tried to go around and take pictures, everything that was non-conformant based on the, the application that was required by the building department, and seeing that we're not asking for anything any different than what's already in the area. And I hope we can get their approval. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to ask, if you wouldn't mind walking us through the pictures that you provided, and just if you could briefly tell us what it is, so that I'm clear on what, what it is you're showing us. And picture A, it looks to me like we see a building that's right up against a, a side, side yard.
Yeah, that's the house right across the street from my mother-in-law, and, which is just up above our house on 3092. That house has some issues at this particular moment. They had a spill in it, and there's actually doing work on removing the spill. And it's kind of been taped off for a while. I don't know what the status is.
Yeah, staff can fill, fill you in on that. It is under a code enforcement action at this time.
Okay. And B, it looks like we're looking south on Hazard Street, and you're showing us here how it's a narrow street and...
You're right.
So properties are kind of...
A lot of these were built, like you said, quite a few years ago. And the examples of them, I guess, as long as they feel they were on their property, I guess they felt like that was sufficient. The, the B picture is actually that little garage. It had a real small parcel that I guess is not in conformance with anything, you know? And we acquired that from the thousands across the street. That was separated off, which, by nobody knows the reason why. But we acquired it, and we're going to take that little piece of property and I have it, you know, assume it on our property. We're going to do a, take that property and actually make it part of our parcel.
Okay.
I'm in the process of right now getting a surveyor to actually do that process.
But that's completely separate from what you're looking for this evening?
Yeah, it is, but it, it's just, I should give a little history. We're trying to improve the neighborhood again, so I want to tear that down, and then I'll be working again with you guys on trying to maybe improve a nice little garage there.
Okay.
My wife would like to have a swimming pool, but based on the restrictions we have, and I'm working with them to see what's possible and what's not possible. So we're taking everything into consideration.
And picture C, the Irish pub.
I'm keenly interested in this photo.
Yeah.
This caught my attention. I don't think I looked at anything else.
Yeah, I know. This is right above our property, the, the property line above the street. And both sides of this property are almost on the property line itself. I, I don't know a lot about this property. I do, the only thing that came into effect with us about a year ago, the garbage company actually came to us and said that we didn't pay our garbage bill. And, and they gave us the address, and we said, well, we thought that was our little shed, you know, that was the address for it. And find out, these people that own this little piece of property was using our address, you know, for it, and that's how it got brought to light. And then at that point, we brought it up to, who was it, the city? Somebody from the city, and they were going to look into it and find out what, the reason why they were using our existing address for that little, little square garage that we have. I don't know what the results of any of that is, though. But we didn't get any more calls from the garbage company.
And...
I want to ask a question. How can, to the, to the planning department, look how close the roof is of this Irish pub to the fence.
Right. Just right up to you.
I mean, I don't care how old it is, that's just astounding that they could have something built so close.
I own one just like that.
You know?
Our garage wall is on the line.
On the property line.
And the neighbor's property has dirt that's over halfway up the side of that garage.
Whoa.
And you can step right up onto the roof from their property.
Oh, yeah. I see a lot of that in town, too.
It was, okay, just astounding. Now, my property is half an acre, but it goes straight up. So I could reach out my window and touch the field. But thank you, that was just a startle for me.
Yeah, it was. The next picture, D, that's just continue going up the street. That front part of the house is right, that truck is right on the street line, right there. So you can see the variance is definitely not 20 feet. So that's just some more examples of the, the property setback. Going up the street even further, there's a little bit of apartment, I think they call it apartment complex. And it's totally surrounded, you know, the street goes around behind it, and there are minimum offsets on it on both sides and the rear. Which is F is the other side of that particular apartment complex. And you can see the street, Washington Street, which is right there on the right-hand side of it. From the top of that street, picture G is actually looking down that fence line to all of our properties. It's kind of structured a little by, by the tree, but you can see all those homes are well within that 20 feet of the zoning.
Whoa.
So like we're saying, we're not asking for any special privilege. We just want to be conformant, I guess, with the neighborhood for, better or worse.
Any other questions for our project proponent? Okay. I'll bring it back then to the commission.
Any other member of the public wish to comment?
Would anyone else like to comment on the project?
Well, I do want to comment on one other thing. I really do appreciate the, the people have actually been really helpful. I've gone down there numerous times to ask questions about this, and they've gone out of their way to really provide me the information so we can make a good decision on what to do. Same way with the, when I got the architect involved in trying to draw up the plans. Some things they were ignoring, but they caught them in advance, and we went back and forth. So I was really appreciative on your support and your help. At least it get us to this level.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'll bring it back to the commission for consideration and possible action. I think it's pretty clear, we've got a constraint, a non-conforming lot, and it's a proposed addition. As we discussed, it's not going to exceed the coverage, so it really would not negatively impact the property. I think we have some assurance of not impacting other properties, especially in light of the condition of other parcels in the neighborhood. So any other commissioners have comments about the project?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the staff's proposal and the, and the variance on this property.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it for discussion. To amend the motion to include the findings as specified on page four of the staff report, incorporating the staff report as part of the public record, and approving the variance on the conditions as set forth, and specifically noting the irregularity of the property and that granting this variance would not confer any special privilege. If you'll accept that friendly amendment?
Definitely.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Mr. Painter, would you call the roll?
Member Reins.
Yes.
Member Lepper.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Yes.
Vice Chair List.
Yes.
Member Friend.
Absolutely.
Well, we have a decision. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Good luck with your project. And it's a pleasure to meet you all, and, yeah, we'll look forward to seeing you here again for your next project.
One at a time.
One at a time, very good. Okay, moving on to number nine matters from commissioners and staff. This involves commission members and development services department staff comments and reports. Commissioner Matters.
Madam Chair, and to staff, I noticed from the minutes that council has directed staff to agendize a discussion on formula businesses in the historic, in the downtown district, correct?
Yes.
All right. And then...
I don't think a date has been set for that.
Date hasn't been set yet. But what, what do you envision as part of that? How, what do you envision that looking like?
I think Director Rivas will be leading that, but our brief discussion about it, it would be probably more of a workshop-type item where you probably wouldn't be seated up there, you would, we would all be seated down here.
Right.
More of a communal...
Is this a joint with the council, or just, okay?
No, just a...
But an open to the public?
Yeah.
Clearly...
It wouldn't be this formal, it would be much more informal. It won't be this formal. It would be much more informal, and we would...
Yes, correct. Okay. Clearly, from my perspective, from the comments that we received when the item was presented last month, as well as the comments that we received this evening, my view is that there's a lot of confusion and misunderstanding about the issue of formula business and franchise and the downtown area, et cetera, et cetera. And so I look forward to having this discussion. So, thank you.
I agree. I had a conversation with Mr. Rebus this afternoon because going through those documents, it keeps coming up that the fast food is prohibited. Well, that comes from the general plan. And that's also taken kind of out of context. It is called Historic Planned Commercial Zone, which doesn't exist, except it's in theory in our general plan, and it is never, along with several other zoning designations, never got codified. So this may be something that the city council directs staff to, you know, revisit, maybe bring to our consideration. So I was, that is the conflict that I saw, too, is that in our zoning, what we use to administer the general plan, there's no prohibition in the general plan. This other designation, it's stated as such. So I think that's the crux of the problem right there.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, there is no designated historic downtown district anymore?
It's called Historic Planned Commercial Zone. And it's referenced in our general plan, but it did not become part of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Re, you can probably do this much better than I. I was vamping while you got back to the back.
Well, if we could discuss this workshop we're having on the formula process, include the historic, you know, some information on historic district, and I would like clarification on fast food restaurants, if we could maybe have those three items in the same workshop.
The council directed that staff would conduct a workshop with the planning commission, and we're also going to conduct a workshop with the economic advisory committee to make recommendations to the city council on whether or not we should amend our code to provide for further restrictions of formula businesses. So for example, staff has been looking at other cities, and I'll give you an example, Carmel by the Sea. Carmel by the Sea has complete restriction of formula business. And formula business in the city Carmel is more than one business of, that's of similar character and signage and menu and all of that. Another option would be, say, North Beach, San Francisco. We've been looking closely at that because it's been in the news lately. There's been, it's one of the areas of higher vacancy. And so staff is looking at showcasing that as another example where it's a certain geographical area within the city of San Francisco where it restricts formula business. And I think there it's 11 businesses or more constitutes a formula business. But that's another example. And then another example is Arcata. So we're going to talk about some of those examples. Right now, the city of Placerville has its central business district. And the central business district allows for formula business upon approval of a conditional use permit and a site plan review. So you have a conditional use permit where you have purview over the operation of the business. And then the site plan review gives you purview over the aesthetics, the construction, the architectural changes they may or make to a particular building. So if you have vacant lot, you're going to have a lot of discretion. In case of sourdough, there wasn't, there was little or no discretion because they weren't changing the building at all. Just you had some discretion on the signage. But we're going to come back...
But they could have if they had wanted to present that, right? Wasn't that within there? They could have presented...
Certainly.
They could have presented architectural changes.
They certainly could.
You know, okay, I want to make it clear. They chose not to.
Yeah. I don't want to focus on sourdough. I'm trying to keep it at a higher elevation level on what we're going to ask you. So it's not going to be to come back and look at specifically sourdough. But overall, in the central business district, do we want to further restrict formula business? Is our CUP and site plan review not good enough? If you look in the past, we've had Starbucks, we've had Quiznos, we've had Mr. Pickles. We have a lot of other businesses within. So it's not a control on fast food. Because I think there's a lot of examples of fast food, both formula and non-formula on Main Street that currently exist. The Target, when the city adopted its formula business ordinance in 2004, came about after the Shell station there at Spring Street and Main Street decided to reimage their place. And so in reaction to that, the city then created a way of controlling a formula business from coming in with typically what you see is the entire architecture of the building becomes a sign. So the whole building's a sign. I think that's what the city was targeting, not trying to say we don't want a formula business. But it's not to say that the city so desires to move in that direction. City wants to consider that. Staff will be coming to the planning commission for your input, along with the economic advisory committee in the very near future. We just want to get past the sourdough first because we want that separate from any discussion on formula business in general.
Any other matters from the commissioners? I have one other thing I'd like to talk to you all about. And that is giving staff plenty of notice if you are not able to attend, if you have a planned absence. And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, we have committed to serving the public and supporting staff and also supporting our applicants, people who put in, you know, for a project. They're waiting on our review and our determination, and so we shouldn't leave them hanging in the balance. Sometimes there's money on the line, and they want to just move forward. They need an up or down vote from us. So I think staff, you know, I think it'd be just a good matter of our own policy to give staff at least three weeks' notice if you're planning on not being here so that they can let the applicant know, or if they are aware of something maybe coming down the line so that they know whether or not, or when they can get their project on our agenda. Also, I think, Mr. Painter, maybe you could verify this. Do you want us to say for sure that we will, you know, when we get notice that there's going to be a meeting, would it be helpful for you to know, maybe, you know, in a timely manner, in a day or two, that we will be here so that you can count on us having a quorum? Would that be helpful to you?
It's always helpful to know the number of membership that would be in attendance at any meeting. That said, at the time that, because I know Lynn Hunter reports to you and sends out the public notice to let you know in advance of even getting the packet that there has been an application submitted, and oh, by the way, it's going to come before you. If, okay, I guess the best way to answer your question, at the time that you received that communique from Lynn, we had already spent the money that the applicant submitted as part of their application materials. We were, we are committed to agendize that item for that applicant. I guess to answer your question, that might be too late for us to pull back without publishing a renotice saying we no longer have a quorum if that were to be the case. That's not to be said that, of course, people get sick, they get ill, and can't attend the meeting. That's understandable. So to answer your question, I guess, the best way I can, at the time the notice, public notice comes out, that is typically about two weeks prior to the meeting. And letting us know at that point, that might be difficult for us to call it back, but we will if we have to.
So it might be a better practice just, you know, when you are starting to make your plans, if you look at, and you know you will not be here on a first or third Tuesday in a particular month, just to let Andrew or you, Pierre and Lynn, let all of you know, hey, I will not be here on the third, you know, Tuesday of November, for example.
Well, if I can make a more general comment, basically the expectation is, is it's a regular scheduled planning commission meeting every first and third Tuesday evening of the month for the entire year, unless... I think the only one that we typically cancel would be that first Tuesday in August, because that's always national night out. And I'm trying to think if there's one around some of the holidays. But other than that, that's the expectation. It's a regular scheduled meeting. And so it's very important for us to know well in advance, because sometimes we're planning things well in advance, of certain items that we need to get to meet whatever schedule that might be out there. Something, maybe there's something state statute, and it's a code change, and we have to come to the commission first before we go to the council to meet a deadline. So we're planning things well in advance, and that's why it's very, very important just to have your calendar out. And if you're planning your family vacations or those kinds of things where you have that flexibility, always consider the regular scheduled meetings. And as Mr. Painter pointed out, we all get sick, we all have emergencies or things that happen, and that's okay. The main thing is to have a quorum so that we can move forward with the city business.
Thank you.
I'll be here on September 3rd, but I'm not too sure about September 17th. I'm working on vacation, and it depends upon the people that I'm going to, their availability. I'm planning on going the week of the 10th, but it could be bumped to the 17th. I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Any other matters from the commissioners? We have a department report. Anything else from staff?
Yeah, staff has a couple of items. Before we do a short slideshow presentation for you?
I just wanted to update the planning commission a little bit on where we are with our cannabis applications. I think if you recall, we had 13 applications. We went through phase one, which was basically a determination of application completeness. And those applications were then forwarded to the city's consultant, HDL, with, did a very in-depth evaluation of different criteria, everything from security to location to the business model of the particular cannabis applicant. Those that scored 80% or higher will proceed to phase three. We have four applications that did not make it. And so the remainder will be moving on to phase three. And phase three is an interview by the cannabis selection committee. We'll be starting those on Monday, the 26th, and then we'll be scheduling the remainder on some other date yet to be determined. We sent out forms to the four applications that did not achieve the 80%. They have a right of an appeal. It's a two-step appeal process. They can appeal to the city manager first. City manager will consider their appeal, and if the applicant is not satisfied through that process, then that appeal can move on to the city council. So we'll see what happens with those four applicants. But I wanted to give you that update that we're slowly moving forward with our cannabis applications.
Yeah, a couple of other housekeeping. In regards to September the 3rd, you probably have already received public notices sent by Lynn. So yes, we will have three public hearing items on that evening. All of them involve site plan review, one involves a site plan review and a conditional use permit. So we will be having a public hearing on the 3rd. As for the 17th, there's a possibility that one of those items that would be heard on that evening, we have been, we have been in contact with the applicant, and it is possible that they may not be able to attend. It's the applicant may not be able to attend. As a courtesy, if that were to happen, we, of course, because it's already been publicly noticed, although the agenda has not been published, in order to save us money and the applicant's money on the publication, we will likely still have the item on the agenda, but we would request that item be continued to the 17th. So there is a possibility we may have a hearing carried over to the 17th of September. I also want to let you know that unfortunately, the hotel project on Jakeway Road, the applicants let their entitlements expire. So that site plan review and approval by the commission a few years back, I think it was 2016, that application is now null and void. Oh, yes, thank you. The big elephant in the room, of course, is the appeal of the sourdough and company. There are two appeals filed. They will be heard by the city council on September the 10th.
And the city received two separate appeals, and both appeals will be considered by the council separately on the 10th.
I was astounded that it costs $400 each to file those appeals. People must really be concerned to put out that kind of money.
I guess staff's only comment to that would be that $400 probably does not cover the cost that's incurred by the city in processing that appeal. If you look at other jurisdictions, appeals are generally much more than that. You know, personally speaking as a staff, I think you want to have some level of cost, but not so much that you restrict somebody's ability to appeal. But if it were to say zero, we would be inundated with appeals. So there's some balance on that amount, and it sounds like a fair amount.
Oh, I wasn't arguing about what the city was costing. I was commenting on the fact that the people's feelings and their viewpoints on this issue are so strong that they're willing to put out $400. I don't have $400 to put out for something relating to the city. I got to roof my house. So it just verifies to me how a hot-button issue this is and how people do really care, you know?
You say you have a, any other matters?
Yes, we've got a short 20 or so slide presentation tonight. I'll run through it pretty quickly. It's about neon and neon-like signs here in the downtown corridor. I was just chatting with Member Friend about really the nexus behind bringing this back to the commission. There was a comment from a member of the public at some time in the past. And I think Member Friend and I recollected, it was a time when Member Jubo, Ted Jubo, was still, was a member of the planning commission. And there was a direction to staff to bring back a discussion about neon and neon-like signs in the downtown here in Placerville. And so this agenda kind of allowed us some time to do that, and here you go. Are you ready, Jason? Yep? So under city regulations 10417B, neon signs are actually described as, and defined, and considered an internally illuminated sign. So they are a permitted type of sign within the city. The bullet two on this slide would indicate that signs in any nature that are flashing, or as described here in the quotation, "A sign incorporating intermittent electrical impulses as a source of illumination", creates an illusion of flashing or which changes color. When I read that, I thought, if we've all been to, you know, the Strip in Vegas or some of the lighting in Reno that has lights that turn on and off, and they do caricatures and... Correct. So I think that's what the city had in mind when that particular language was put in the code. So approving of a neon sign, it would not approve a sign that has this characteristic flashing. But if it's a static illuminated image or graphic, then it's considered an internally illuminated sign. So the next few slides kind of show the existing neon or neon-like signs that we have in existence here in the central business district. This one in particular was approved under a site plan review and a construction permit in the mid-1980s. Similarly, we had Mel's approved with a permit in the late 1990s. Now, this particular sign, we don't know when it was established, but it sure appears from our sign inventory records that even back in the 1980, this sign existed. So clearly, it's been there at a minimum since 1980. But I think we're all familiar with that particular neon sign. On top of the Carrie House Hotel is this roof sign. Now, roof signs today are not permitted, but this sign was legally established with a building permit as provided here in the slide. Yeah, that one does illuminate at night, yes. So not, yeah, clearly visible from the west. Yes. This is a sign that was recently... This is a, this is a sign that was recently approved by city staff as it meets the, the purpose and intent and definition. This would be considered a neon-like sign. It doesn't have the neon gas tubes, but the appearance is the same. Here's an old relic from a long time ago and we actually have a permit from this and from the 1960s as I provided. So I've given you kind of a, the color is the most recent view or a Google street view and the other one is a photo from 1984. Couple of others are right next to each other, the Sanitex cleaners and then the jeweler adjacent to it, which is the next slide. These were, it appeared to be constructed about the same time. It's actually the one building. There are two businesses in this one building, so that kind of makes, makes sense from a, from a construction standpoint. They're also very similar in terms of their appearance. They're very, they're very basic. It's a very basic neon sign.
Are you talking about Randolph Jeweler? That was?
Yeah, this one here, there are two, and both of them still exist. They're still on the wall. The black and white photo on the bottom is the projecting sign that you would see on the, the alley.
Have you ever seen them lit up at night?
Yes, the Randolph Jeweler's does, or I, I don't know if it, now that they're vacant, I don't know if it illuminates anymore, but the Randolph Jeweler Main Street elevation sign, I have not seen it illuminated, but I, I believe I've seen a photo of that and I believe it's, it's red. This particular sign was approved by staff and it meets the purpose and intent, these two signs. A question was brought up or a comment was, and maybe, maybe a member friend, you'd like to raise the same comment to, to all involved here.
Well, I believe it was this particular sign that was the subject of the public comment and, and the question is that this, the, the one below is on Hi- on Highway 50 and that's a scenic corridor, is the first point. And the second point is, I guess staff administratively approved the sign.
Correct.
And what would it look like if all of the other business along, businesses along there decided to do the same thing in that scenic corridor? And I, I kind of concur with, with the public member that this should have come up for discussion because, because of that nature and as I mentioned earlier, we disapproved, of course, I, I voted against it, but this commission disapproved the lighting for the, the other fuel at the Shell station, the, I don't know, fossil fuel, that's not fossil.
Yeah, propel, I think.
Propel, propel, because they had green illuminate, proposed green illuminated pricing. And, and the public comment and the rest of the commission agreed that, well, that's in a scenic corridor right there along Highway 49. And it's true, that is a scenic corridor and so is Highway 50. And so that wasn't allowed and so it, it, I always am worried about precedence and process. And so this didn't come to this body and, and if we started to allow everybody else, everybody stopped putting up their signs like this, you know, where does that leave us in the scenic corridor? And it competes, in my view, it does compete with our Christmas trees, frankly. I'll, I'll say that, it, it really does. So, I mean, I, I think it was a legitimate question and, and, and the question is still out there for, for me.
Okay, well, I, I guess I can, I can take a shot at response, in response. These signs were ministerial or a permit only because the site does not require a discretionary action by the planning commission. In the context of the Shell station, their remodeling and actually converting the old drive base, loop base to, to a convenience market triggered the site plan review for, which went before you and, and a member friend, you were, you were a part of that process. So that's the distinction, because that went through a discretionary action, the signage was part of your review as a commission. This particular request, perhaps it's, it's just not referenced in the code, we are aware that it's historic, scenic highway corridor and we understand that, but there is no mechanism in which to require a sign permit, which is normally ministerial, over the counter permit unless there's a site plan review pending or already approved for the site.
So, so let me ask the question in a different way. If this body would be concerned with a parameter such as a scenic corridor, why wouldn't staff also be similarly concerned? In other words, I mean, it's kind of sounds like somebody can, can get through and I'm not pointing fingers at, at this particular business, but just in general, if, if, if the standard of review by this body is going to include that scenic corridor, why wouldn't staff also? And then it doesn't, it doesn't allay my concern about other businesses and so significantly doing that and all of a sudden, what we have along Highway 50 there is a very different view than what we have now and I think is incompatible with the scenic corridor. And that's, that's really the, the crux of my question on this.
It's not just the Christmas trees, it's also the El Dorado High School metal art figurines that are along the fence that would interfere with this. And I'm concerned that because this is up, that other businesses will use it as an example and say, you've got X, why can't you have Y? That bothers me.
It actually, in my view, would compromise this commission's ability to say, and I want staff to hear this. If, if another business along, in the same area had to go through a site plan review with this sign being up and administratively granted, I think it would compromise this body's ability to deny a subsequent application because, certainly because of the scenic corridor argument, because it's going to say, point to that one, say, well, what are you talking about? It's right, you know, there's that. Again, I always worry about precedent and process.
You're nailing what's coming up to me in, in hearing this discussion because if, if they don't require the site plan review and then they put the sign up and then go through a site plan review, it kind of can be a dual attempt, I mean, in theory, I guess, right? To, to get your sign done and then go. Oh, well, yeah. I've heard, yeah, so that comes up as a question, yeah.
If it were to impact the scenic corridor, would that trigger a sequoia review? Who has the, it's Caltrans, they designated the scenic corridor, but then they hand it over to the city to protect. So it would, are we talking, yeah, some sort of, you know, neg deck? What, when you, what are the terms for, what are the limits to impacting and, and what is an impact to the scenic corridor? I reviewed the statute when we had the improvement to the sign for the gas station, fuel for less. It just really wasn't clear to me what, you know, an impact, that's, that's not within the scenic corridor. It starts at Highway 49 and goes to the east, so that wasn't in it, but I pulled up the statute and it really wasn't clear to me, you know, who has the authority and, and then what is, you know, how do you determine what's a, an impact?
I'll just take a stab at it. Typically speaking, staff is constrained by the code, so whenever, whenever we receive a building application or an application for development on a piece of property, either it's either by right or by a conditional use permit or some other land use discretionary permit, meaning it goes before a decision-making body as opposed to over the counter at the staff level. So since this is ministerial, it's not subject to SEQA. It's not a, it's not a project subject to SEQA. And as far as the scenic corridor goes, you know, the city does look at that at some level, but basically the scenic corridor starts at about where that bridge is, as you come across Placerville Drive and you see the, the state sign that has the, the California poppy on it. And so going through the city, tip, typically speaking, a scenic corridor would have started on the other side through this development corridor with, within the city, but it didn't for whatever reason, but we are cognizant of that. Maybe sometime in the future, when we look in an historic district for downtown, that'll add some additional discretion for the downtown area, but for right now, the triggers are, for example, it's a formula business or if it's any new commercial development within that zone, it would trigger a site plan review, but this is just signage and it was a ministerial application, so it didn't rise to the level of being discretionary, subject to SEQA, subject to review by, by the planning commission.
I would like to comment that this is a nice-looking sign compared to the Placerville Hardware Magnetic Letter sign.
There are, there are others, there are other neon or neon-like signs. Some of you may, may not be aware of this one. This is on top of the roof of the Odd Fellows Building. It is. I've seen it illuminated. It's a gold, gold or yellow rings. Okay, we, and I, I do have some slides from, you know, the eighties that, and these signs are no longer erected, they're no longer on the wall, they're no longer projecting, they're no longer anywhere in downtown. This particular graphic, I don't know if you can make it out, the foreground, but some of those cars are probably vintage forties or early fifties. This gives you an idea of just how long ago we've had neon signs downtown and that's a, that's a looking east at the Empire Theater on a rainy day. Look at the power poles running right through downtown. And here's the very, some very iconic signs we have or did, did have erected not too, not too long ago. This one is just up the street and it's no longer, this was up when I first moved here in, in the early 2000s. This was still, still on the wall. This one's another, another very iconic sign. That's correct, yeah. So next to the cafe was a lounge and the circle in the A in this photo were part of a 1980 sign inventory and so staff at that time had, had circled the, the A, so I'm sorry, I don't have a vent or a, a clear image here, but that, that was the purpose of having the circle in the A. Correct, yeah. It's River City Bank behind it, yep. Now, I didn't know where this was, but this is now part, the space is part of Robinson's Pharmacy. So it's adjacent to the Sanex cleaners and then connected to or next to the, the jeweler's. Yeah. It had, and I have another photo, not with, not tonight, but a, a photo that I cropped down from, well, the photo that I, that I have was enlarged and I cropped it down and I didn't know this, but maybe those people who've been here long-term, the, the storefront windows were the obscure blocks. Do you, do you remember that, Michael or, or Chris who've been here, been here a while or Barbara, I don't. So we're going down memory lane here. I'm, I'm going in kind of numerical order, so we've got Adwood Insurance and they obviously are, have relocated. They're no longer on Main Street, but they had a couple of, of neon signs. Now, these two show up in the photo I provided earlier and then I've shrunk down on this slide. One of them in the photo from early days is not illuminated, but it, if you look closely, they are both, the Empire Beauty Shop is illuminated on the wall. The Shoe Repair is the one that is not lit in the photo, but if you look at it closely, it truly is a, a neon, neon sign. This one was also erected and still up when I moved here in 2001. That was taken down, I think, when the property owner changed hands and, so yeah, it's no longer, no longer on the wall. Yeah, I, I have no knowledge or remembrance of this particular jeweler, but it's, it's on the, the south side of Main Street, pretty close to, almost directly across the street from Old City Hall. And that concludes the, the trip down memory lane. Does any, have any comments or questions?
I just have one real quick.
Oh, from staff.
Just, just another comment to make is, and Mr. Painter can correct me if I'm wrong, is he, he spent a lot of time researching neon signs and it's a, it's a fairly old technology. I think the neon sign technology's been used since, I think, the, the early 1920s. So it's been around a long time and I think some of the comments that we've received from the public is that it's not, it's not an historic type of sign. Well, what's historic then? You know, 1920s is pretty old, so I just wanted to point that out, that neon signs have been around a long time. Beauty is in the eyes of the beholder, so whether or not, you know, you like neon signs or not, you know, the, and I'm trying to remember, there is a section on our code about, it's neon tubing that does require discretion and for example, I'm thinking of the, the In-N-Out Burger has some neon tubing that outlines the building. Well, that went through discretionary review and that was approved by the planning commission back then, whenever it went to the planning commission. And I think that application eventually went to the city council on appeal for different things, including the big sign.
Yeah, Director Rebus, I think that context is really a building illumination, more, more so than a sign illumination.
Right. I, I certainly appreciate the presentation. I, I do note however, that I don't feel that we're able to comment perhaps on the neon sign that might have been employed with the Sourdough Company, given its current status in the application process. Probably have to wait. Right, but I mean, I'm not even sure it'd be appropriate to offer comments now, see.
Probably no. I will, I will say one more thing, that we all, we all know the movie, It's a Wonderful Life. I believe that film, that film dates in the 1930s and clearly there's a couple scenes in there where, where Bedford Falls has changed and it's illuminated and it's got flashing lights and, and all of that. So that just gives you another, gets, it gets to Director Rebus's point on really how long that, that material and that, that concept of light, our signage has been in existence.
It's one of my favorite movies. I see it every year and when Bedford Falls turns into Pottersville, that's when it looks like the Strip at Las Vegas.
I have a question. What precipitated this presentation? I mean, it's interesting, I appreciate it, but I've worked for many governmental agencies and there's always an initiator.
Well, it's staff's recollection and maybe a member friend can correct me, but there was a discussion many months ago when a previous member of the planning commission was present, Mr. Jubo. There was a public comment raised by a member of the public and the question was really regarding the, the Pizza Bene sign. And so there was a request by this body at the membership at the time to, to have staff come back and provide some information about neon signs and neon sign history in, in the city.
Thank you. That's a very simple answer and a very good one.
That concludes staff's comments this evening.
Well, thank you very much and, yeah, very nice, yeah, history project there. Any other matters from commissioners? Seeing none, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:32 and until September 3rd, our next regular meeting at 6:00 PM. Thank you.